Thank God for order. The Mont Pleasant Public School Board of Education meeting on October 7, 2024, at 6:30 PM, in the highest level of here. This meeting of the Mont Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in public that is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct by individual business that requires action by people. These items may include those discussed at today's meeting presented to the board through discussions. It's important you to turn off your cell phones and if you're able, be silent for the present meeting.
I want to be agents to the flag, the public United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This fellow will read our indigenous land and knowledge statement. Mont Pleasant Public School is honored to acknowledge the indigenous people, these traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the indigenous people and their ancestral lands is our expression of gratitude and appreciation, and a way of honoring the indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and who stand on which the second notch in the warranty tribe has resided and has continued to reside on for centuries. We feel that it's important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. I'm also going to read right now some headings of our educational governance agreements that we all signed back in January. If you want the full copy, believe it's on the table of prime execution. As board members, we are committed to the following: professionalism, respect for equity, inclusive collaboration, responsibility to a forward-looking vision, dedication to community engagement, and a commitment to team use. Please go on. You didn't pay up here? Can you read here?
Was Isaac Longbeath here?
Okay, ready? We'll start by approving our agenda for tonight. We have the motion. On the favor. Any opposed? Thank you. And then start with the last super commander.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a really fun meeting because in addition to our reports that we're going to have this evening, we get to begin by recognizing some very important groups of people. So first this evening, we have a really special recognition. We have with us this evening Mary Furbin, and many of you probably know Mary as her. Mary, do you want to come up? For those of you who don't know Mary, Mary has been a very dedicated and committed city employee and served our district and our community as a crossing our 42 years. Mary, 42 years. Yeah. And we're thrilled to have Mary with us this evening. Mary officially retired as of Friday. Congratulations. And we just want to thank you for your dedication to our community and to our school district and for everything that you've done to help make sure our students get to an appropriate school safely. So we appreciate you.
I would like to say a couple verses.
Yes, of course.
Take the mic.
Yes.
You got it.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Over here. Come speak.
Yes.
I'm here.
Yes.
You better keep talking to this.
Okay.
Come on. Just how can I keep from singing? My life flows on in endless song above earth's lamentation. I hear the reel though far off him that pales a new creation. Through all the turmoil and strife, I hear that music ring. It sounds echo in my soul. How can I keep from singing? But though the tempest loudly roars, I hear the truth that lives. But though the darkness round me close, songs in the night it gives. No storm can shake my envious calm. Unto the rock I'm clinging, since love is Lord of heaven and earth. How can I keep from singing?
Thank you so much, Mary. Congratulations.
We never get to be a whole because of...
What a great thing to celebrate. Next on our agenda, we want to celebrate some really important people in our district. As you all know, October is National Principal Appreciation Month, and we take this opportunity to recognize our entire team of administrators. We have some very dedicated principals, we have some very dedicated administrators, and they really make our district run. Without them, we don't want to be able to accomplish the things that we do. So for our administrators that are here this evening, I want to introduce you. I would ask that you come up to the front to receive your certificate, and then please stay up front so we can take the photo. Thank you. Okay. So first Stephanie Binder, coordinator of state and federal programs. Yomisha Powell, principal. Emily Blan, former. Linda Boyne, Assistant Superintendent for Canadian Health. Lisa Davis, Mont Pleasant High School Assistant Principal. In your favor, Chief Financial Officer. Stephanie House, Supervisor of Special Operations. Joe Judge, Chief Financial Information Officer. Erin King, Former Mary McWhire. Robin Lott, Director of Transportation. Jason McIntyre, Athletic Director. Kelly Irquum, Assistant Special Operations Supervisor. Kat Amstad, Director of Gracious Val. Jeff Legg, Control of Wasteland. Josh Rose, Director of Operations. Amy McGee, Creative Elementary Principal. Emily Shiner, Full Child Coordinator, Creative Elementary. Marcy Stout, Senior Principal. Matt Walters, Mont Pleasant Middle School Assistant Principal. Darby Leager, Mont Pleasant Middle School Principal. Lynn Weber, District Nurse. Kristen Willie, Mont Pleasant High School Assistant Principal. John Winkler, Mont Pleasant High School Principal. And Julie Wright, Mont Pleasant Middle School A P student. Please join me in thanking our entire administrative team for all of their hard work and dedication to our district. Yeah, you may have to step together. We'll get you up. Okay, ready? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for our administrative team. And then our next recognition that we get to honor tonight, our next group that we get to honor this evening today is a really important group. These folks are the first folks that our students see and the last folks that our students see, our drivers. As we know that in two weeks, it is National School of Safety Month, so we take this opportunity to recognize and thank our drivers for all of your work that you do to make sure that our students get to an appropriate school safely every day. And many of us say it's a huge job, and it's a job that most of us could not do. So thank you so much for your dedication. We're going to do the same thing. I want to call your name. You'll come up, stay up front, and we'll post for future with our drivers as well. So first Paula Whigler. Miriam Bigelow. Stephen Blesk. Carol Feltman. Sonia Pikefield. Peter Gillespie. Jan Humm. Missy Higgins. Timothy Kirby. Matt Hissel. Karen Keist. Derek Maxson. Larry Pearson. John Porter. Arista Ross, our district manager. Michelle Ryan. Kimberly Slater. Julie Sunderman. Bill Traynor. Stephen Webber. And Gabe Winburn. Can you please join me in thanking this highly dedicated team of directors? We get to my... Just a little bit. Yes. Come over here. Thank you so much. I do want to offer a special thanks to Bill Traynor. I think probably most of you know this, but Bill has been a driver with us for 25 years. That is amazing. So we're going to transition now into a very timely annual update from our transportation department. So I'm sure this is again, our director of transportation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I will mark your presentation.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so as Joseph Brown was on my transportation staff, I think you go to... And for that was Bill's 25th year this year. Bill, thank you for all your dedication. It's a lot. It's a lot. We have three staff. So with our staff that we have, we have 108 years combined service in all of the public schools. Again, my dispatch mechanic, my drivers, my flex drivers, who come in and everything. I know what they're going to do. I appreciate them all. And there's one person who just recently obtained a C P R with us and is a teacher and a coach, and that is Mr. Josh Ex.
He's amazing.
Yes. Thank you, Tim, for setting up that role. So training for future C P Rs, that is. We have two employees returning, Mr. Mark Pitts, who's joined us. Today was his first day. He will be a flex driver. And then Mr. Reinsen, at least, is a trip driver, a trip driver. So we're pretty excited about the perfect sports who are able to possibly. So our state reported data this year, we just finished this morning with our totals. This year, we transported 659 students. That is up just a slight amount from last year. We do have 1,247 students signed up for transportation. They're all out. We're not quite sure at this moment, but there are plenty of sports or something else that do sound awesome at the present moment. So our fuel consumption has gone downish this past year by 233.91 gallons. I thought that was pretty substantial, and as we go hand in hand with them, we've had also driven 22,525 plus miles. So overall, our fuel cost has increased $11,749. Again, I think that's a pretty substantial increase, headed in the right direction. Some of that has to do with the price of fuel has gone down since I did the previous. So last year, we had 880 total student changes between new students, existing students moving, et cetera, for a complex who, you know, had purchased a house or something like that. So far this year, we've had already 736 changes, which is a lot in their way of having scheduled a lot of changes. And I do believe our router and dispatch and drivers have been a test that's been a lot of changes this year. So I think we're on track now. So the next series of slides is the replacement schedule. We do have two brand new buses that we just added in the last couple of weeks. One bus is currently on the road, and the other will be within the next week or so. Our mechanic is still getting that road ready. They just don't quite come in ready to roll down the road yet, but we're very close. This past year, we sold two buses. We sold 15C to a place on a section for $5,100. That was a running bus. They came and picked it up as they were picking up about eight through the state of Michigan. 15C was sold to Sacred Heart for $20,000, and they had shown interest in our next two buses that we got for sale. We will be having them up on the auction block hopefully by the end of October. And again, we will notify Sacred Heart when they are up on the public auction site to be there. So we are hoping that they're able to snag one, and we'll see what is the other line. They are both running good buses, so we hope to get a decent price on them. So last year, when I was here for my first presentation, we talked a lot about our new routing software that we were getting. Some of these projects are now completed, including our routing software is installed and updated. And navigation tablets in all of our buses is installed and running, and it has a sub driver or flex driver, and we tell you they're great. So I have no doubt that drivers getting the directions into the office, those tablets will be able to use them every day. Geo tab, GPS devices have been installed on the buses. That is great, so we can notify schools when our buses might be running late or something has happened, but it's quite interesting to watch the screen, just like the function ants chase around each other going down the road when they leave the middle schools. It is really an impressive program. We also have the My Ride K-12 parent app that was live as of just August, just a couple months ago. This app currently has 360 users, so we're trying to get it broadcast it out on social media, different handouts, flyers, things like that. We would love for every single one of our parents who has accessibility to a cell phone to be able to have this parent app. It will allow two-way communication. So if our bus had happened to be late for the end of the reasons, that we could then send out a notification to parents. I did do a test on this this morning to a route that has several groups outside, and I got there for one pair. I sent them just a welcome to the app kind of thing, and who I am, and then they got this, and they pleased to respond, so I can see that everything's working. I did reach out to our application company, because even though our notifications are turned on on our cell phones when we're practicing this, it's not coming up as a notification or alarm. So I did receive an email this afternoon after I left, some other directions, so I'll see if I can get those. But I'm really hoping for the two-way communication, and the parents can also message us when the child's at home. So a lot of student I D badges, these were issued at the beginning of the school year. We had them at all of our open houses. The drivers had passed them out, and then eventually we've taken them to the schools since they were passing up for us. The elementary level, especially, has been very helpful with this process. They do hook right out the student's backpack for grade five when they log. It's grade six through 12. We give them the card, and they can hook it, hang it, carry it, if they would like to. I had heard that our software company is thinking about trying to get a cell phone scanning capability on it. I think that'd be amazing, because 95% of our students would throw their number out there, but probably have a cell phone in that. That'd be a lot easier to check their cell phone than it is. So the thermostat that I talked about last year with a timer has been installed within the bus parking lot. During the winter months, the buses are plugged in overnight. When the temperature is at or below 20 degrees between 4:00 to 6:30 a.m., the outlets are live. In the past, they've been live 24/7. So while I feel like that was a significant savings on our electric bill, we anticipated right around $3,000, I was bummed to hear that unfortunately, we're on the middle schools meter, and so there's no way to do a search for all exactly how much money you save, but I would like to think that you save. So all of those projects, again, are up and running, and those are projects that I would have mentioned last year in our presentation. So as far as marketing and advertising on is going, I have participated in a couple of jobs there. I went to the Keeping It Local in 989 Job Fair. That is a Facebook group. I don't know if you are on Facebook or not on Facebook, but that is an excellent group, and they share a lot of community events. They do have 12,000 members, so I feel like that was a very outreach as far as advertising. It was helped just down the road there on Bradley at the Annual Grand Church. I did participate in the Nissella Company Youth Farm Fair. I've done this two years in a row now. We're about out there with food for six hours a day for the five or six days that matters going on. I do feel like that's a great community outreach, not so much for marketing or to bring that staff, but I really do feel like it's a very outreach group. I can even talk to the kids who are showing their handles, and hopefully get to build some better relationships with the community. So I've seen a talk company be able to appear this year, and I appreciate the support there. I can close a couple of flags on here, just so you guys can see what they were. The first wire there in the bottom is the My Ride K-12 app. As I was explaining exactly how to sign up for that app, we have added the QR code to make it easier for people to do that. We have a couple of events this year with parents. We did events with drivers. We participated in that at Janes Town, which is a large group stuff for us, in the Ossinger, which has made it ahead at the Crosses. Next year, I helped to visit a few more apartment complexes through, like, Deerfield, Sommerhill. I really do feel, again, that's a good community outreach, so the parents can see the drivers, and then just look, they were better done when we could be up the public field with the bar than when I was there. As always, our hiring flyer, Business Cards is in action. That's why I pass up on that defense, it has all of our information on it. And as of today, we are confirmed for December 10th with Michigan Works. Myself will be working with Human Resources in the Special Med Department. We will have a D A where we are doing, I don't like calling them open interviews, but open information. People can come in, and they will have the computers right there that staff and future staff are going to comply on. So I think that's also a great outreach, and Michigan Works will also market that happening with our fly, presenting advertisers that we have, Malach, et cetera, that kind of things. So I'm pretty excited about that. I just have confirmation on that one today. And then to close up, what I have to say today, all of our staff will be training for CPR, starting, we have two sessions, October 23rd and October 30th, these will be done right in the work room of transportation with Nurse Corinne. She's going to come in and take care of that for us. Again, December 10th will be the Deerfield Michigan Works. And my plan for the routing software is to be able to make our bus the most efficient by finding the most cost-effective and quickest route between multiple destinations. We've already been able to do that on a couple of routes this year, small, minimal changes, but it's made a difference. And I would like to continue to build relationships with members of the community, including, but not limited to, parents and school staff. Any questions?
And we have to thank you all for working. It's really nice to see the updates and to see some of those members going down. And I remember last year how excited the team was for the routing software to facilitate this, and it looks like you're getting results. So they can keep all your hard work.
Just wanted to remind you, to you and to all of your team, thank you so much for all the outreach that you've done. I was able to attend one of the known little drivers' events, and that was a great event. Like, they were, the community was excited, the kids were there, they had come with some stickers, and they were looking at the bus, and it just created this great energy about riding the bus. And I think that that is really powerful when we look at, you know, what we want to create and how we want families to see this service that we offer for them. So thank you for all of you, because all of those outreach things are extra, and we really appreciate them. I think it goes without saying, we are still hiring drivers.
Always, always.
So if anyone has any friends or family members or anybody that they think might be interested, definitely tip Robin a bump, because we're always looking for more helping us. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is the policy review. And I will say for our desk, it is perfectly okay if you cannot stay there on home, and we are accustomed to that, so do not worry about this. Just going to get out our policy review work here.
I know the deal.
So this evening for our policy review, we're looking at the 4,000 series that are part of the Troom Policy Update that they sent to us in July. And so we've got a combination of proposed changes from Troom as well as changes from our process, where we've looked at, you know, some suggestions for changes. So what I would like to do this evening is go through this small packet of 102 pages, clearly, and just make sure that you all understand exactly where the changes are and actually know exactly where our changes are, so that we can move forward in a positive way. Since these are new policies, again, this would be something that we would actually do twice. So tonight is just an opportunity to review, to ask questions, and then we will look at these policies again before they're approved. Because they all do have changes, there would be an approval process for all of these policies. So I would consider anything that we were looking at this evening not yet now. Okay. So we'll start with, obviously, in general, this section is in regards to district employment. And what we know from the work that we did back in August is there are quite a bit of changes in our non-discrimination and our anti-arrestment policies. And then there's also quite a few changes in regards to things like evaluat... And then there's also quite a few changes in regards to things like evaluations, staffing, those kinds of things. And so some of these policies, we have actually already looked at. And I'll talk about that as we go, but you'll see where there are some pretty big changes in them. So first point 101 is our non-discrimination policy. And this policy was updated to reflect the new Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. It has a citation there. And then it also updates some cross-references to other policies that we approved back in April. You'll notice under section, under section B, the second paragraph down, there's a reference to policy 3115B. That is one of the policies that we reviewed and approved back in August when we were looking at our new Title IX requirements. So I know from our earlier work, we wanted to make sure that anywhere that this policy referenced the Employment Compliance Officer, we made reference to our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, because that is the person in our district that's in there. And if anyone has any questions regarding this policy in particular?
There was no comments. We had a few changes back then.
Yes, regarding the compliance officer. So policy 4102 is the anti-arrestment. That policy title used to be anti-arrestment including sectional harassment. They did drop the including sectional harassment piece off of the title. And again, that is because that section is addressed in the 3115s. Remember, when we did that policy, we did 3115 and then 3115A through G, and then identified a variety of different areas. So in this policy, when we looked at it before, we wanted to add sort of that introductory paragraph that we've talked about so many times. I have that noted here. And then basically, this is cross-referencing those policies. So much of this is stricken, because it is referencing back to that policy 3115, which again, we have in August. 4104 is the employment complaint procedures. And in this, the big part in this title is we're adding the phrase for allocations indicating civil rights. So again, we're looking at the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act references. We're going to talk about that in a second, where there actually are now separate policies. So we pulled that out of this part of the policy. And we're looking just solely at how you initiate a complaint, their investigation procedures, and then who would be the state or federal administrative agencies that those complaints would be reported to. Policy 4105, again, is the disability workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. And there, we remove the phrase under state and federal law. This section of policy really looks at APA in section 504. And again, this also pulls up the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. So it's really just focusing on applicants or employees with a disability. If we then go out to policy 4105A, this is an entirely new policy. And this is the policy that focuses on pregnancy workplace accommodation for employees and for applicants.
There's no questions on this question.
And I would recommend, since this is a completely new policy, that we really take some time to read this policy. And certainly, we want to, you know, revisit it again before we approve it, we definitely can. But this policy is meant to address all the accommodations that are not fully provided under the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Policy 4105B is religious workplace accommodations for employees and applicants. And again, that's a new policy meant to address those religious accommodations under Title VII. So same as 4105A, 4105B is a completely new policy to recognize a completely different type of accommodation.
Same thing, none of us have questions.
Next item, we'll go into policy 4106, which is the Family Medical Leave Act. This policy, the change in this policy is really meant to provide the superintendent some flexibility to either superintendent or the superintendent's designee. The way the policy was written initially was only the superintendent. There are also several spots in this policy where they have gone from the phrase "parent/guardian" to that capitalized parent that we talked about at the last meeting, which that's defined in the first section of our policy. So that is how consistently all the way through our policies, TRU will recognize parents and guardians with the capitalized parent. So there's four or five different places in this policy where that's changed. The MMLA process is fairly highly regulated. Linda's office and her staff really works with that process as individual candidates arise.
There's no comments, and we didn't have any changes like that.
Policy 4107 is the policy focused on military leave. That is a policy, I believe that when we looked at it initially, we wanted to add an introductory comment to that section, so I have that note there. The only addition or change in this policy is in the second paragraph down, they have added it under Air Force and Space Force. They're recognizing Space Force as an applicable uniformed service that would be covered under military. Interesting. The next policy, 4109, is break time for nursing mothers. This is just updated language. When we originally reviewed this, this policy calls for a one-year period, and we made the discussion that we'd like to pass this, make this be a two-year period. So that's still something that we have the option of doing. This basically updated the language that sort of applies to all employees and not only those employees that are exempt. And then it also makes reference back to the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. Okay, policy 4201, just employee updates and standards. Again, when we talked about this policy back a few months ago, we looked at wanting to add sort of that introductory paragraph to that policy. The big change here, first of all, there are a few references where we went from parent/guardian to the capitalized parent. But then it's also recognizing that our obligation to report adult abuse to the abuse or exploitation of a vulnerable adult. So if you look at section A7, that sentence is new, where we have an obligation to immediately report reasonable cause to believe or suspect abuse, neglect, or exploitation of a vulnerable adult. Prior to that, this policy was really just focused on our obligation to report abuse for a child.
Is the link new, or you stopped referring to the last one? We added the, in the policy now, we have a link to the Michigan to the back. Which I actually thought was a great addition.
That's not marked as a new, let me check that.
It's okay.
Oh, I mean, it's a nice, it's a nice thing to ask. Policy 4202 is, again, very similar. It is looking at child protective services and adult protective services and that process of making the report. So under A1, the third paragraph down, again, it's a new paragraph, really looking at that obligation for us to report anything that we're concerned about in regards to a vulnerable adult. That would, that would be my guess, that would be my guess. So when we have special education, if we're talking about a child that would likely end at age 18, but for some of our special education programs, you know, they can say with us till 26, that would be my guess.
We have no comments back on this one.
So the next one in our packet is 4203, that's the Administrative Guidelines. Again, there's just two spots where they shifted from parent/guardian to parents. Policy 4204 Confidential gives student information. And again, there's just a change between two spots from parent/guardian to parents. I thought that policy 4205, which actually is an administrative guidelines, were very interesting. That this policy has been updated to reflect the FBI criminal justice information. And so it walks through all of the things that we're required to do and the processes that we're required to follow, where we're looking at that context. So again, this would be a new policy for you, as it's an administrative guideline, but it's quite comprehensive and interesting. Are there any questions about that?
Uh, no, let me just check. Well, I don't think I included it in one that went new, because I missed the 18 letters. So I think that one, it might be worth taking that aside. Not, I don't know.
This policy refers in several places to the LASSO, and the LASSO is the local agency security officer. And Linda Boyd serves as our LASSO, so thank you.
And that would be good.
And remember, administrative guidelines are a little bit different in that they're not worded, but they tie back to the policies.
That's what the agents come for, I missed that. I wonder if we can even add that to the title. That would be, yeah. It's fine, yeah, it's fine, yeah, so folks understand why it's so different.
So policy 4206 is in, looking at employment contracts. The addition there is under number B14, and it's regarding an appeal and evaluation process. So that is the added spot in that.
It will be there, we had nothing back then.
Policy 4207, under third-party contracting, they just removed surplus language. It's the previous language that unless expressly prohibited by a collective bargaining agreement, they changed the language to say "unless prohibited because of a collective bargaining agreement." So a little bit of legalese, just an update there. Policy 4209, I know this is a policy that Jessica even mentioned that we wanted to talk about. This is the prohibition against abortion referrals and assistance. Since that statement law is no longer in effect, this policy has now become an optional policy. So it is a policy that when we initially went through our review, we did approve this policy. But as we go to look at our new policies, we can either approve or disapprove of this policy, since it is optional. Policy 4213, anti-nepotism. It's just a slight change under letter C, item 3. What it's looking at is the removal of the superintendent's designee or the board to make exceptions to the policy. So instead of doing the superintendent or the designee, what the new policy is saying is that the superintendent can do that with board approval, or the superintendent can make an exception with prompt notice to the board. But there's no longer an option to use a designee in that process. Policy 4214, again, just has a few places where we went from parent/guardian to the capitalized parent. Policy 4215, district technology acceptable to use. There's a couple spots where they've changed the parent/guardian to parents. And then about midway down the first page of the policy, there's a paragraph that says, "Request for district records must be promptly directed to the FOIA coordinator under policy 3501." So again, it's referencing back another policy. "Only authorized employees may disclose district records to third parties unless otherwise permitted by law." So that is saying that only authorized employees can disclose district records, otherwise must be sent to the FOIA coordinator and high-serving roles of FOIA coordinator for our district. Policy 4216, personal communication devices. Again, there's several references to parent/guardian, it's changed to the capitalized parent. Policy 4221, focused on employee speech. Same thing, there are two references to the parent/guardian, now just changed to parent. Under policy 4228, the no expectation of privacy. The only change in this policy is the legal reference, that the authority for this policy is the amended U.S. Constitution.
This wasn't the policy to us, first you look at it, and there is no questions.
So we have a couple of policies in this group that are new and optional. 4229 is one of those policies that we can elect to adopt or not. It is acceptable use of generative artificial intelligence. And this is something that is definitely a hot topic with our teachers. In fact, some of our professional development there this week, we focus on AI and the use of AI. So I definitely would like you all to spend some time looking at this policy and determine, again, at this point, we can accept it or we don't have to. My guess is in the upcoming years, that we will wish to accept the policy and focus on the use of AI.
We have any questions from any of us on this one? Is a comment in the table?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there a legislative reason to? Do you know?
I'm not that I'm aware, but I could ask that question. I don't think that there was a legal grounds.
Yeah, there isn't one, I just, yeah, it's just, let's start with the authority. I was just curious, I guess it's just, as you said, a hot topic.
Right, I can ask though. Again, my guess is if there isn't one currently, it won't, I'll have to check.
This one feels vague. So one thought I had is maybe wait, waiting until we have a little more guidance as the technology is advancing quickly. I don't know if accepting or not, this won't change much. It's vague enough, it defines what AI is, you know, does it, you know, the appropriate use of AI must be appropriate, but that's about it, there's really not much else. So it maybe feel like, what's the point, a little bit. I haven't seen all the students, but this is for students, right, this is for our employees. And if we do want to go ahead, there is another optional, there's a couple, for the partakers not seeing this, there's a couple of areas that are optional, where we could still choose to have the policy, but then remove some of the sections that are in there. And one of the optional part is whether employees must obtain fire or community for the support of this, or designee if we're using AI for any disciplinary purposes. And I thought the logistics of this would sound a little bit like that, yes. So if you do go ahead, we'd definitely take that out. And, you know, maybe instead of by training to our employees on what consists of appropriate use. So that is a little more than that, that was my thoughts.
And keep in mind, we receive policy updates twice a year. So my guess is this will be a policy that will need continued to be updated. I expect we'll get the next round of policy updates in June, so it'll be relatively soon.
Let me just check with you, I think there was another comment. Katie, if you want to add?
I can address, just, I think, to me, it felt, it's better if it's really like, it's more structured. So, like, I'm sure we don't want to choose to say we can get it.
And I feel like if we put a employee policy in place, then we needed for all groups, including our students. And to have one for one and not the others, especially at the pace at which AI is evolving, felt a little off. And so, I don't know how you feel about this.
I feel like I will conflict it like the rest of you. I know AI is a hot topic, it's not going anywhere, speed ahead. I think that it's smart to acknowledge it in policy, but I don't think we have a district stance on what that means for our employees or our students. I think everybody's at different levels for that. So I wouldn't mind going in and being able to modify and tweak that so that we acknowledge that. that it's present and coming. But at the same time, I don't want to not say anything and I'm like, well, we'll deal with it when it gets here, it's here.
Yeah. Well, I agree with what you're saying, actually. We could, we could keep the definition, recognize it as here without putting the elements yet as the elements are getting developed. That might be a nice analogy.
And, you know, I would like to, I think, be a little clear about the fact that there are appropriate uses. So, and I, I think that's the whole, that's the whole direction of the professional development is what are appropriate uses? How do our teachers work with our students to use AI and an appropriate factor? So definitely.
So revisit with maybe a clarification until we have that.
Policy forty-four oh one, professional staff, just the definition of professional staff. The only thing that changed the second paragraph in the, which is just the notation of the revised school code section. These next couple of sections are a little bit odd. So first you have policy forty-four oh two, assignment and transfer. And you'll see that whole policy is stripped and they're asking to delete that policy because again, back in January, we approved policy forty-four oh two R, which was a policy that went into effect on July one regarding professional staff placement. And so initially, the policy forty-four oh two, they're asking to delete that policy. And then the change for policy forty-four oh two R is to remove the R, remove the effective date because we've now passed that effective date. And just to put some clarification in that, we are referring to K-12 certified teachers of record, especially when we reference the teacher tenure act. And so you'll see the next few policies, we're going to follow that same pattern, where the request is that we delete the previous policy. We've already adopted that same policy number with the letter R next to it. Now they're asking that we delete the first policy, remove the R, and then that policy.
And makes a lot more sense. I'm sorry for your time.
I don't, I don't. Okay. So again, so we go to forty-four oh three. Again, they're asking to remove that policy. And then forty-four oh three R will delete our policy when we remove the R. And then we're looking again at that clarification of K-12 certified teachers of record. And again, under section C, that addresses not teaching professionals and teachers that are not subject to the teacher tenure act. And then the next policy is forty-four oh three, which is performance evaluation. So they're proposing removing that policy and then taking the policy forty-four oh three R, which we approved back in January, removing the R and making that our policy. Next is exactly the same for policy forty-four oh five, reduction in force and recall. They're suggesting that we remove policy forty-four oh five and take policy forty-four oh five R that was approved in January, remove the R, clarify that we're talking about K-12 certified teachers and...
That's one of the only ones we have comments on. Oh, and they were very small. It's just add four days. I think we had that quote, but I'm in that series, but it's...
And then the last one that is like this, I'm sorry, first we have policy forty-four oh eight, termination. And we're looking at, under C, they added a sentence regarding not teaching professionals and teachers not subject to the teacher tenure act. So that would be preschool, GSR, GSRP, or other teachers. They didn't serve a shared period under the teacher tenure act, but this policy is still applied to them. And then again, we have policy forty-four oh nine, not review. We have the deletion of the original policy forty-four oh nine, and then the removal of the R after policy forty-four oh nine R. This was a policy that we originally reviewed and looked at back in January. The last couple of policies are focused on administrators. So policy forty-five oh three R is the performance evaluation policy for administrators and supervisors. They're asking that we remove the R, take out the effect of July one, twenty twenty-four. In item A seven and in A fourteen, there are two references to appeal process that's in addition to this policy. When it was originally approved, we did not have appeal process. Policy forty-five oh seven is termination policy for administrators and supervisors. The language added is the third paragraph down, and that's providing the procedure for terminating an administrator or supervisor, references the languages in the collective bargaining agreement. So essentially, if your administrators are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which ours are, we need to make sure that we're following that process. And then policy forty-six oh three, performance evaluation. This is the superintendent performance evaluation, and it just clarifies those new changes that went into effect for state law. We all intended that trading back in June, it was June, the summer. So just make sure that our, clarifies that our policy is consistent with the new partnership statute.
Are there questions about the four thousand coming up today?
And it is, this is our first meeting that we revisit, and so we're going to be specific attention to that optional AI and then, what do you two and I, the other options?
So that would be, I think that would be, you know, a board discussion whether or not you wanted to adopt the optional policies. And then if you decide to not do that, at this point, there's always an option to do that later.
Sounds, thank you.
And then the last item on our report this evening is an update from the Sex Ed Board. So, I'm Christina Hodge. Our Sex Ed Board chair. Thank you, Christina.
Hello. I'm sorry, I got a little bit of a voice start with my desk. I'm Christina Hodge, I'm the chair of the Sex Ed Board, co-chair, I should say. So we had our first meeting of the year in September, so this was planned and requested by our Sex Ed Board to present anyways our goals for the year, trying to do that beginning of the year, which would be the end of the year, and be addressed. And this will be the meeting. So specifically on our last meeting, we looked at our bylaws and where we're at with our current list of numbers, and I provided you all with a current list of numbers. So we kind of fall into this really vague area of lots of terms expiring at the exact same time. There was a little bit of a snafu that we didn't really realize with Kathleen Bunker being at the pretty deep when we ended the year, so she wasn't over there to reapply, and it kind of got lost in the shuffle. So we could manifest the motion correlated directly with Linda, and Lena, we definitely value her input on the board as the educator for the elementary district in that topic. So when you look through this, it's a little interesting based on our bylaws to where people are, just to explain a bit. Gabe needs all of these, co-chair, and has full plans to take on the supervisor role of state law. If it's the educator that's taking on that role, they have to be educated for three years in that topic. She does not qualify for that, so that's why Sean Lawson is continuing to stay on or is becoming the co-chair with Gabe. I can take over that as the health profession on the board, however, I don't have access to that data, and frankly, it can be kind of confusing to read when you're not a teacher in that data. So our board agreed that we would have the three chairs to continue on. And then you'll notice a little bit differently, the bylaws specifically say a year for any non-pleasant public schools educator. We did vote on that specifically in our last meeting. Kind of grandfathered these for all terms that were already in the process of the expectation to be three years before the bylaws were created. So the only educators that were not present in that meeting, or non-pleasant school staff, I should say, were Laura, Laura Lay, and Taylor Close was not present in that meeting. The other educators, the non-pleasant school staff that were present, agreed that they felt they should be, should be grandfathered, and should continue their terms for the three years for some person they admire. So when they drop off, we can probably just follow the bylaws and one year, Frank Thomas and all the school staff. So when you come out, we did successfully add a 12th grader student representative from Rowan Frost. We did, the most student applicants may ever receive. That was very exciting. But unfortunately, we were not able to look at the two adult or community member applicants because they already took this over by Abby Rowan, already took this over, and Rowan had it over our level. And so that takes me to our request, dedicated request for amendment bylaws to article D of our bylaws to the number of members of leadership, specifically to section one. Yes, they shall consist of a maximum of fourteen members and additional exceptional members, correct in the bylaws, state eleven. And just, I give you the specific wording and some reasoning in the letter, but just to verbalize some of that, we as a Sex Ed Board unanimously are highly concerned, the last meeting unanimously are highly concerned that everybody's term expiring at the same time. This kind of leaves an opportunity for people not familiar with the lower surveys, the data, the lower curriculum locations, things like that. And unfortunately, we really would like to see those choose two members, especially for the only members as the support has elected, then we would really like to see a lower class than ninth or 10th grader be on the board of students that may get, and hopefully continue to follow that through to be the upper class and elected as well. So increasing it to thirteen members will give us that potential to do that, not to force us to do that. So we did request the bylaws to change up to two students, but it gives us that opportunity to do so. So that's kind of a little explanation for that, because currently, we potentially could have multiple meetings, it's very rare where we have every single meeting with every number present. So potentially, we could have a lot of ties in these meetings for a certain number. That's a little explanation on the specific request for amendments, just to support.
I appreciate your questions. If it's the case that even when your term expires, you're going to apply again, right?
Correct, yes. Okay. So, but looking at this, and we went through everybody's, so we have in the past, sort of slide that on there, I think it's a six or seven years in co-chair. This is my fifth. And when we look at applications to remain unbiased of all these applicants, whether they know it or not, we, the first thing we turn up is, are they applying, for example, as a parent? And if they're applying as a parent, are they going to have a child in the district for that three years? So that's a prime example of why Katie Anderson's a longer chair, she will not, I'm sure, would not have a student in the district for three years. So that's kind of like, you can see, check off for us in the leadership roles and networks, who go through that. So yes, they can do that. But when we went through this, there was a large portion of the ones expiring in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, that don't have access, that will not qualify if they're applying. And they're, you're well aware of legislature requests, changing encouraging requests and different requirements for members, which we have on the Sex Ed Board, that's specifically issued in legislature. And if that passes, we're anticipating the members December, what's weird, I don't think that's, you know, the year from all of these terms will kind of fall off. And so that could really kind of potentially be an opportunity for this, the experiences.
And I just, so I understand about this thirteen person you want to add, you want to add a student right on?
I don't know. That is a discussion that's seen back to the board. I'm not a hundred percent, our goal would be to, next year, potentially adopt another student or request that other student. We already know through these two applicants for this year to be our, or I'm sure, but you guys will vote where they may be accepted for the thirteen. So we continue that if we're going to have as well. So I can't speak as a Sex Ed Board from that standpoint without taking it back to the next meeting. Any questions?
Thank you very much. I had the same question as Jessica, whether it was specifically earmarked for this year, it doesn't sound like that's the case. One of the questions I had is, I think, if I recall, it should be wrong, is that the number was yours specifically because it was struggles to be, have the majority be present at a meeting? And so that was, that was my memory for the wanting to reduce the number and whether you think that will be an issue. If I remember the bylaws, you do need a majority now, right? Is that correct?
Yes, we do need a majority now. We were coming up, I mean, potentially, if we didn't turn down any, it's all applicants, that's what we were running into, is, you know, we could potentially be twenty, twenty-five, thirty. We have had with everything going on, we have had an increased desire, I think, in the last, maybe three years, everybody's need to have tickets. So that's why, as a board with the bylaw committee, we specifically requested kind of a hard number, and that was the number the board came to. And I will say once again, Kathleen was on much greater than when those bylaws officially came out. And so, not that we forgot about her, but I think it's kind of easily overlooked that. We're just keeping that as a mention, so. So next meeting, I'm seeking the questions specifically of what our goal would be. And just to reiterate, we spoke, I mean, we had some amazing essays extended from the students. And whether as a board we kept one or two as those voting, we really, really would like to see that other class than representation hopefully potentially move up in that trouble.
Just a clarifying question. When you're talking about educators after the current of grand fathering to the three-year term, that wouldn't be your co-chairs, right? Or would it be like the health teachers? Do they still have a year or would they? Does that make sense?
You are making sense. We did say specifically that the Sex Ed Supervisor would be one of the health education teachers in the district, wasn't necessarily, I don't remember what section of the bylaws that's in, but it does specify that, um, request, let's see, well, once again, it does indicate that, so it's not quite, um, in a picture, we should definitely change that. But I, I can say from experience, I'm not anticipating, we'll need three co-chairs once they, they sort of is prepared to take on that role. And he's been involved from even supervising perspective, so he's really joined our core force. So I don't anticipate that. But from an educator's standpoint, I don't, a hundred percent everyone's looking at bylaw committee meetings and to, for your organization, this as well, so it isn't every single meeting. But going back to my brain, suppose it means, I think there was just, if there was shopping in the district for family situations, there are, we, teachers already have dedicated, we didn't want to force them into three-year membership, that's not my force, but, you know, request that three-year membership, we didn't look at it annually. So it'd be the same except, of course, that's like, they were just meant as a non-pleasant public staff, that they want to sit in the board, so they could. They could at the end of this three-year. We didn't put a maximum limit in our bylaws of how many terms, we did ask their question of how many terms they could.
I think the other, sorry, just to clarify, the other one was, we just don't want to see the health teacher, you've served a year and now you're done. Does that make sense?
Right.
That's, it's so tied into the board.
Yeah, and I mean, in my time on the board, I've been, with the, 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 the health teachers have been the most involved from my perspective. I have not seen that happen, not to say it can't happen, but we are so grateful for their input and their time on the board. And so I do, I don't anticipate it would happen, but once again, I just want to be sure this wasn't the same thing. No, no, there's no limit on any terms for even to how many terms you can be co-chair now. Um, we do vote on the co-chairs at all. We have a supportive course to present to you guys.
Yes, we have.
Sorry, this thing is for members. We present our members or you guys.
I just wanted to, um, say a new word to the, uh, board, um, for being proactive and thinking ahead about 2026 when, um, this becomes an issue. Um, I just, a point of clarification, and maybe I heard not her, um, just, um, just want to clarify, um, that there are up to two voting students. Um, so it's not, it's not necessary to have two voting students, but if you wanted to, you could have up to two. And so I just wanted to make sure that, um, I think the, what was said was that the board would like to see too. He gave you the flexibility to have up to two, and so I just wanted to kind of make that clear. Um, and then I think you've acknowledged the, the line from the last conversations that we had about the trials and our recommendations for fourth and fifth grade. Um, I was happy to see that in that communication as well.
My last bit would be just the update on our goals for the year. Uh, every single person was kind of concerned of our aged applications, they're extremely vague. So as a group throughout this year, probably closer to the application, so we'll be presenting any applications, we've got to, believe, uh, for both students and adults. And then, uh, from the last, now this is not information, this is not information, I cut opportunities back to the sex ed board. They will, they've got the agenda last week with, kind of, with this letter as well, so that everybody's been notified of your request to, to complete by November 26th, yesterday, uh, for curriculum by the end of the trimester for fourth and fifth grade curriculum. Um, and so this is not a response, this is a clarification of what we did last year and was presented, if I remember correctly, being honored to present it in the year end. But I don't believe that we officially presented, so it's going to be a successor next meeting. Uh, we, if we do in-depth multiple meetings, uh, multiple times a month, three different curriculums, we had, uh, representation from R E S D, new representation from each company, uh, providing a big talk tour of three hours of the federal, um, components. And so our group, there was not a majority vote to vote in at any of those. There was however, a majority vote following input from Kathleen, who is our educator of this age group, to that we had appropriate material to continue teaching our current curriculum. So I wanted to really explain that we voted, uh, majority vote as a amazing compromise for a very dedicated group, uh, to continue with our current Wonder Years curriculum. We have full access, there's nothing we're missing, there's nothing students aren't going with currently, so it's not that we don't have active fourth and fifth grade curriculum. When the author of Wonder Years is telling us it's outdated, there were many concerns, uh, that our group had as a whole, many pros, many cons. Uh, but ultimately, there was a financial component that, that it becomes all online. But the stuff that was added, what we are currently teaching is not outdated. And if there's any videos that our teachers feel outdated, there's a protocol to file to present to the sex ed board. We briefly, and we presented to you guys as a recommendation, those are, tend to be the most popular, uh, outdated, we're saying. And that was also on our parents', um, community survey as well, about the outdated videos in the sex ed.
You want to respond to that, um, I just want to just for everybody's clarification that legal requirements versus educational best practices. Law does not dictate what educational best practices are. And so if there is an updated version of that curriculum, then the previous version is outdated. So, um, using outdated curriculum is not best practice as far as the educators are concerned. And if you want to make that statement, uh, for folks to take here and understand.
Yeah, I would like to piggyback on that. I mean, that's the nature of academic publishing. Curriculum gets updated. There's no reason why we're not using these people between 50s, there's no reason why we're not teaching students about the poor humors. And, uh, you know, in terms of the updates, Wendy Sellers has provided a great deal of information about why she has made the changes she has made. The other board member who wants to see this material, uh, happy to pass it along or just put it in the shared pile. And I'd also like to point out, and she's a very well-respected educator in the field. I've talked to a lot of people at the state level and people from around the state, and she's a well-respected person. So I don't, and can you say a little bit about what you mean by a financial issue?
Just we pay for it, when we, new curriculum, we pay for it, so definitely financial means with, but it will be clear of all majority of the sex ed board, we're down with the new curriculum for Wonder Years. So our goal, if you look at my letter to, because it's a school board, was to be remain focused. But my response was, I do not believe it's a realistic expectation for such a dedicated group that really, I mean, we bring in research articles, we bring in experts on the topic, experts for and against that material to look in the next month when we've spent two years looking at this material. So that's my response back. I want to do this. My new response is I will be taking this back with your request for response to me here.
I really do appreciate that, and I appreciate how much time and energy and thought and care has gone into this process. Um, I, one thing that I feel like we as a board might want to look at is, um, parent surveys. I have looked at their responses in terms of what, you know, obviously it's a self-selected group of people, it's a small subset. But in terms of what people in our community who have expressed opinion have expressed, I, I feel like it's, I read your, I feel like it's the rest of the board's partnership too.
I want to add something and maybe try to, um, continue to provide evidence to the sex ed advisory board. We have a new strategic plan in place and we are drafting a pre, um, a new set of policy. And I, I think that we, we do want our curriculum to line up with our strategic plan and our policies. And, um, I do feel like the, um, I don't, so the, this, um, Wonder Years before the update, which is outdated, doesn't, no longer matches the policies that we have. I am not attached to having one particular curriculum over and under in terms of which company, which name. But I do want to see a curriculum that matches these policies and the ones that we are, are no longer do. And so to me, that is where the conversation lies and, um, as a board member, that's what I want to see is, is alignment, which is what we do for all our curriculum. Whether it's history, social studies, um, and so I don't, I don't think we should do anything differently with the health, um, curriculum. Uh, I also, so, so that's one point. Um, I, um, yeah, I also, I think would be interesting to see, and I don't have that data that's available to you, and maybe it's not. And I don't want to make a big ask, but to get an idea of what other districts are using, um, because I, my last I looked, and it was a wild group, so then I'd be, um, I might remember wrong. It's that the majority of Michigan is using the updated Wonder Year curriculum. And so I would want to see, besides finances, um, some really clear reasoning of why we can move on with this curriculum as well. Um, I do want also, in terms of thinking about pacing guides, new curriculum adoption, knowing that the health unit is in the third trimester. I, I understand perfectly well, and I respect people on the board this takes to go through curriculum to break expenses, so it's a big undertaking. Um, my hope is that, um, those conversations can happen within the first trimester. Because if we debate for, but then we have one more year of what I would consider bad practice in that it is an outdated curriculum. Um, so that our educators have time to prepare, um, for whatever is coming. And so I understand the pressure that, that adds. Um, and I feel like as a review, in, in terms of our leaning relationships, um, to make sure that we have best practices, I feel like we do owe it to the students.
And I would just say, uh, in response to your strategic plan, I heard you guys up here about the goals, uh, end of the year with that strategic plan. So the first meeting of last month, we did give every single number to add towards that, so I'm here in the strategic plan, so that also is really accessible, so they now have that to make sure that we stay aligned with it. Um, but I, I think unless you back to that curriculum to bring forward to me, I do not anticipate we're going to go back and look at something that's entered down and we sent hours and sold it down. And so, um, I will take that, we back to the group, uh, but we do have other curriculums and was already previously, um, I have one more set of curriculum, but I had one person, our local R E S D, uh, person did come and speak and, uh, we presented, and that was the, don't remember exactly what the curriculum was, like, since this, uh, presented that. Um, and then we voted that down. So that's our local districts, the majority of our local districts, we just have, it's the each level, so.
Question, hearing both the want to do a good job, want to do due diligence, we wondered, sooner than later, is it possible to go, maybe I had this conversation, but to go back, what would be a reasonable kind of need of time, or some time to review it, get it ready, you know, that is, you know where that sweet spot might be?
We would love to give that too, but we are a wide variety board, um, and so I don't want to speak for them on that. I want to make sure that everybody would have time. We, the serial presented, we opened it up last year for anybody to bring us material presented, Katie Summers, why was 40 behind bringing another? Nobody else has brought us any information to look at, other than the three that were presented, um, to Kate, I should say she brought it forward. Um, but, so there was, uh, a couple in there, we just didn't have enough to look at them for the differing, um, but those three specifically, we even have. Trying to work to our pros and cons on, I, I can't give you an expectation, I can tell you that even before we, you guys' request for the number, our group had already met and had already said this is a priority on our next agenda. So, um, I can tell you, we would love, because we went from having four meetings a year to multiple a month. So I, I think that as a group collectively, we would love to see this for the best, uh, to be finalized, to present a curriculum to you guys on a time issue as, uh, as a part of issue back to the students to make sure that they're with us.
It is not.
Yeah, I want to clarify your question, definitely to your question, Katie, what has been today the time frame that we've been working on this?
Should I answer?
This is the time frame for today, here, now, that this has been in process.
About that month that we definitely did to look at the, no, I think it's a couple of years.
When was the charge?
So the curriculum was due the end of last year.
Or when did the charge start?
We started a little here at survey.
Two years ago?
I would say we're coming up, we have a past year for coming up to the present.
That's a long time. Um, so two years to date, roughly. Um, I just wanted to know that because it's on the line with the starting today, when we had years to do this. I just want to re-center us back on what is best for kids and what is best practice and what is aligned with our strategic plan and our goals and, um, that is continue to do the best we can to meet that deadline. That's my suggestion.
So this one. And I have a question, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, or you think that no one else in the group suggested curriculum aside to be, or to be present to them?
Okay, I misunderstood, and I'm glad I asked for clarity, thank you.
Do you feel like you have the information you need to bring back to the board?
I do. Do you guys have any other requests for our, for the year?
I think, and I think curriculum is really, um, tough with our agenda. And if you want to say, we appreciate your time this month, uh, it's a big undertaking, I also understand the controversial nature of what you're looking at and the fact that these, these agreements, um, I want to acknowledge that, we, we do the likes of our.
And it's worth the while as well, we're talking about the time frame, although it has been a long time, but the bylaws was, uh, on the project.
That's how we came into the bylaws, was because we didn't really have considered practice to vote on the curriculum, and that's how we actually realized we didn't have bylaws. So that's, and that's how we back to bylaws to create this, this type of practice.
So I haven't been to any of the meetings, but it makes me think the fact that you got to bylaws because of that night of ability to discuss that, in my view, worth, um, reopening the vote that you mentioned, that you say was voted down, it was before bylaws were created. And so from my perspective, um, reopening these options makes sense.
Boy, I can agree with everything, but then I'll look at it in the meeting, because they totally will have this after official bylaws and they are looking at it, so I'll be back in the next meeting.
As far as my memory, we have a board rejected that recommendation.
We did reject that recommendation, yes.
Already rejected that recommendation.
So can you clarify what's recommendation exactly in their wording now, to come back to their recommendation?
So, um, and then correctly, my memory is that we rejected the recommendation to continue with the Wonder Years without updates. Not the outdated curriculum.
I don't remember it, I'm hearing.
We voted.
I don't remember, since checking this point to.
So I'm pretty certain, but again, we could look back at minutes, but I.
I'm pretty sure that was, that was. So just, because it's a, it's a, our group is also would like to get a response back, so get back to the room, in the meetings, where anybody wants to watch, uh, school board meeting, so we're out, so I will be in chat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks all on our board this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. This moves us to our correspondence. This, over the last two weeks, we did receive two correspondence from Keith Hogg and Keith Frey, that are on your board page. And then moves us for our citizens' records, reverse the rule on the new agenda and non-agenda items. As a, a quick reminder, uh, our cabinet each person has up to three minutes to address us. Unfortunately, as board members, we will not reply, uh, I do want everybody to know, we do pay attention, we take notes, we really appreciate the comments, uh, but we are not engaging at this point. Um, and, um, but that being said, and I need a timer, because our timer's not here, if someone doesn't mind. Thank you very much. Uh, first speaker today is Moonee Hall.
Hi, I'm William Wong. I'm a sophomore, I'm above the high school. I want to talk about the policy and, uh, probably think of it, because I think a lot of kids, I guess affected by it. I heard a lot of opinions, I think overall, I think it is beneficial, I think that it is helpful to kids to interact more and a lot of kids are certain of it. But at the same time, I think, uh, it can also possibly be like a beneficial tool to like some classes and, you know, take away like, for like, every single class, like some classes, like, for like, use a lot. All the other classes might just feel a little, like, if I'm doing like a hat or not, or it can be sometimes beneficial if I can just take my phone out and take a picture or I, I document something, I sort of, uh, I don't know, for an ego study, um, environmental science or something like that, you want to take like a picture of a tree or something like that. It's like really important, it's like, it is beneficial to have like pictures and like opinions, and that is, it's like, um, like we're getting factors. I also want to talk about like how teachers, um, are, if they hear it, then they'll also take you away from, uh, from, even like that's a, their reception, because, um, uh, the time, like, notification or something back in my district, they class out much, and I should chase away from the kid that's like, having, so I walk out to the office and I come back and it was out in the office. And then they just, oh, sounds like a problem, it's, you get reminders, and, and.
All right, good. Next we have, um, Josh Schitt.
Good morning, I'm Josh Schitt, I'm the chairman of the school, uh, we was on my screen, and, uh, a few others, and you really didn't know about, well, Rowan's board, she actually made a claim again. Uh, she sort of, she was a question, she was actually pretty good, so, so, I believe that actually, actually, uh, she's still, uh, up here at school as well. So it's, uh, it's a. So, William, I actually, I actually, uh, just, I did, I did, I did, so it's, uh, it's a, you work here, um, and, uh, we have the freshman, but, I'm, so I would be trying to assist, so. And, uh, I'm actually just, uh, so, it's, uh, I'm in the Republic, and, uh, she's still the worst. Yes, it's, uh, all, so this is one of the best lessons we've actually shown, essentially, uh, this is for a Federation 25, New World, at 195 countries. We have a lot of opportunities to, uh, and it's, it's a complex, so, um, it's, I think, I would be involved for this level, three, three ways enough, uh, to, to work, see mission, competition, so, which are a lot of things. So I'd also like to, uh, just, uh, a brief, uh, a thank you to Robin, and to Pete, last name. Robin made me a C L area, because she's an amazing person, so she's a great hire. So I'm thinking about her, and she prepared everything, she's excited about it, and it's very seamless. And then Pete, I think he was here a week or less, uh, he was with me for 20 hours almost this summer, and very, very patient guy, I only went on the free girls. Um, I almost ran from the girl track, like, he saw me, and he said that would be how I might feel, um, during the test, so, um, incidentally, so I just got residential, uh, in my official white card, so I can have like, uh, school side facility, uh, free day class, um, I've got the license, and I just said, first, I said, officially, so, um, and it just lasted, uh, it's always, since we have an issue come in, press, addressing like, request to change, so we're just, probably see. And I just, uh, protocol, uh, request, um, that we gave immediately, we did, uh, we would wait, we gave you a few minutes before you take a yellow sheet, uh, away from the table, and when, uh, claims are here, it should be a few minutes, and perhaps, and it's just a little, take it, because I have students sometimes that come late, um, and run it, and it's, and it's, and it's just, uh, overall, uh, a lot of people try to get here, but it's just 30, you know, to decide, so, we're just, like, we do the first groups, just start with that, so, that's all, we, we, it's, it's, so.
Good job.
I'm set.
Right. Can you move on to our consent stand, that? Our first item of difference is to approve the minutes of the September 25, February 24 special meeting minutes.
I have the motion to.
So what?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Thank you, everybody. We have a couple items on the new business, and the first one is new.
Yes, we are, we are excited to, um, to your incoming counselor for our basis building. Her name is Christina Coughinger. She's coming way up in the U P, and joining her family here, so she'll start just as soon as we, um, get her train, get her moved in and everything like that, so we're excited. She's got a lot of experience, and we'll, we'll start the process.
It's always awesome. We have a motion to accept any hiring?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed? Thank you, everybody, welcome to the district. Next, we have a dimension.
Dear Board Member this evening, we have a donation from Dr. Thomas Keating to the Monteson High School Science Department, and it is a donation up to Centriphe. I don't know, Kevin.
They're like, well, you said they're like, well, by, it's in the, in the, in the, it's, it's.
So a Centriphe?
Yes, Centriphe.
Centriphe, and its value, they add, uh, 1,500 hours, so we're very grateful to Dr. Keating for the donation of the Centriphe. That's what I want to do about it, yeah.
Do we have a motion to accept the donation of the Centriphe?
So what?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be opposed?
Well, thank you. Um, and that brings us to our board education discussion.
Just want to say, it was such a great, just those are spirits, it was such a great turnout for the grades. So much boiler here, exciting kids, and, I don't think, too many of them would be canning, but, my name isn't the best, but, um, it was just a really positive experience, and just looked out my customer for that. I also, um, Josh brought up something that triggered my memory. I know we had talked about it in the past, and we maybe had this whole group of student representative at one point, and I just want to slip it back around to that, and I don't know what the next step would be, because I know we're missing people tonight, so I guess something to talk about later, but it was just reminding me.
I think as a, sort of a camaraderie, and I did, that was what we did, um, in this way, we did some of those student meetings, so that the board could be more into our student voice, and we could certainly set some of those up as well this year, so that, um, I mean, it's actually, what Ms. Curdick does is fabulous, and we do hear our student voice, so thank you for giving your students credit, and extra credit, and extra, extra credit for coming here, because we really do appreciate hearing the student voice. But that was sort of our balance, that it wasn't one student, it was, um, you know, a group of students, and I know several of you attended those meetings, and if that was something that we wanted to do again, we did them at the high school, at the middle school, we could probably even set them up in transfer of wires, but I wanted to.
I'd be in favor, and I think including the younger ages, I do think they have a place in our fabric as well, and as long, I think getting feedback from an age group, as long as it's done in an appropriate fashion, um, would be, would be great. I know you, you could discuss it quite a bit, I explored that pathway, the last time I went to the Michigan Association of School Board, I asked a lot of boards, how do you fold the student voices? And what I learned from who was at the meeting is a little bit of everything. It is not uncommon to have a student, um, that is not voting, that would be sitting at the board, and we discussed the fact that not having that voting while coming and attending felt a little off to us, and that was my memory of our conversation. And so that's how we handled our visiting sessions at the schools. And I think any, really any ways we can fold the voices, we can create. I don't know if, I worry sometimes about, because I love what Josh Shakes is doing, with welcoming students, or encouraging them to come here and join our space. I worry sometimes about them that can't, right, that cannot come, that don't have the parents with the time, with the ability to join us, and I wonder if we can encourage them to come to us. Uh, and for some, that might be as carried, and getting in front of the like, well, we can carry resources as much. Uh, and so that might be something else we can consider, is, is finding a way, that's been snowed. They can always write to us, or take it seriously, and we'll discuss. So that, that's one option that opens a little bit wider.
And maybe that's a question for all of us to ask, and the answer here, I think, so. Ask your friend.
I just gave my thoughts, um, straight here. First of all, acknowledging the community, and all of the dedicated employees for their acknowledgements today, as well as the students who did come and participate, and, um, I notice that there are people who will listen, but not necessarily speak, it's also just a platform to be engaged actively, to be informed, not influenced. Um, and I also want to say much to my fellow school board colleagues. One of the first things that I noticed coming in as a new board member was their misalignment between, the strategic plan was ending, but things keep moving, education is constantly moving. And so to see the alignment of the strategic plan, along with the policy work, along with the curriculum updates that are happening, um, that's big. You have to not just say it, or write it, but live it, and I feel like all of those actions collectively are, are leading to that, and so, I know most people don't get excited about system change, but I do, and I'm very excited for that, so, uh, much to our fellow school board colleagues, or, and administration for helping us guide the ship that way.
Thanks, Melissa. I think we stated it out in the while, I'm sure it is helping us in the meantime, to hear our staff about reviews and go through, what are you doing for, uh, it is so important to have that alignment, and that is really where, where it happens. Strategic plan is really questionable, but we, if our policies don't reflect those changes, then, then it's, um, it's words, right, and so I think it is, it is critical. I wanted to also add that we have an election coming up for, with several positions opening on our school board, and the bigger food disorders always run a panel, um, where they invite all the people running for an election, so that they can ask questions, and you can get to see everybody with all their shared views. I believe this year, this panel is happening this Thursday, but it is not live, it is recorded, and it will be then, with, and so there was a time for the public to submit questions at beneath that time, as I did already, um, but, um, please keep an eye out for the recording. It is a very good way to see all the members of the general election everyone, and, um, to, to help make decisions. Well, nothing else, I think that the jurors are reading, thank you, everybody.